I would like to bring the Curriculum Subcommittee to order. Roll call, please.
Member Satterwhite?
Present.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Gaetley?
Present.
We have the City Arts and Science Academy, the CASA Program, Program of Studies by Dr. Shannon Gardner. I'd like to invite her to present.
Thank you. I'm Dr. Shannon Gardner. I'm the Executive Director of Innovation and Grants Management. So what we're reviewing tonight is the City Arts and Sciences Academy Program of Studies. The first thing you should know is that STEAM and project-based learning are at the foundation, and those facets of the school are connected to both the courses and the scheduling. And we have planned pathways and advanced coursework opportunities at the school as well. So again, a STEAM school stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, and Mathematics. Students at CASA will be in a hands-on learning environment with unique opportunities to work on projects that blend STEM topics with the arts. The way that CASA courses are different. STEAM and Humanities courses will afford students the opportunity to learn across subjects and work on interdisciplinary projects that combine topics from different content areas. And PBL will be at the heart of the school. Two STEM pathways will exist within the school, Engineering and Environmental Science. And a full array of arts courses will be offered, including AP Art and Music. We have a tentative master schedule. I just want to explain a little bit about what you're looking at. This schedule has been shared with Sheila O'Neil of LTU, but it will be part of union negotiations because it's a little bit different. So Monday through Friday, you can see that we have core courses. So we have math in the morning, and this is just a sample schedule of a student. Those courses could be switched around a little bit depending on who the student is. And then we have a STEAM block, which is where your science class takes place. It's called STEAM because we're going to be really working on those interdisciplinary STEAM connections within that science course. You have a Humanities course, which combines ELA and history. This will be interdisciplinary. In the program, this schedule doesn't show, this schedule shows some more technical electives, but in the Program of Studies, there are many electives there that can help us extend the ELA standards. So you'll see courses like media journalism and novel studies, and those types of courses will help us address ELA standards throughout the day. You know, we have some really interesting ways to make things a little different. So robotics and coding, for instance, is a course that will also be working to build in math skills so that students will get another dose of math throughout the day in a way that is engaging and exciting when they go to sign up for the course. Okay, this slide is really, is just explaining a little bit more what I just explained, but I'll go a little bit more in-depth. That tentative schedule is also a trimester schedule. We do not have a trimester schedule for a whole school in the district, so that would be another innovation. And that trimester can allow more access to electives, and it can allow students to go a little bit deeper into certain parts of their, of the content that they're interested in. For instance, this school is going to have a large emphasis on the arts, and they can take a general arts course, but if they're interested in working with clay and they're interested in sculpture, they can take a 13-week elective to go a little deeper into that and have a high dose of that particular skill. So some new electives that we have are Makerspace Explorations, Art, Technology, and Innovation, Acoustic Folk Strings for Guitar and Ukulele, Robotics and Coding for Math Skills, Media Journalism, Novel Studies, and Mock Trial. Going back to that schedule again, you can see that Friday looks different, so I wanted to explain Friday. But I also want to explain that the day that we propose in the schedule is longer. And the reason that we created a schedule for the negotiations that is longer really came out of parent information sessions. I had many families ask me if we were going to have an extended day at this school. So what we have created is a schedule where a shift of STEM teachers would come in at 7:45 to 2:45, and then a shift of Humanities teachers would come in from 8:45 to 3:45. So that's a tentative idea. It's just kind of a creative, innovative way to say, how can we teach more electives? How can we deliver a little bit more richer curriculum in terms of the electives in the arts, music, technology? Okay, so on Friday, we have a STEAM block that's extended. It's a multidisciplinary block that connects different strands of learning in the school and is multidisciplinary and project-based. So we envision having a CIT in the school, working with the principal, and working with our instructional departments in the district to work on having the curriculum kind of fold into that STEAM block so that it's, it's an extension of some of the things that they're learning. And then we also have a flex block. The flex block allows students to take ownership of a long-term project that they may continue different iterations of over a period of years. So in the spring, when we worked with a group on this school, we worked with a group of administrators, teachers, students, families, community organizations, and the Center for Artistry and Scholarship. And we visited some schools. We saw a school with a flex block. We saw students presenting their flex block projects that they had been working on for a couple of years. An example of one was art projects that students were making out of recyclable materials. And the idea behind those projects was to clean up the beaches in a way that you can repurpose what you find on the beaches into beautiful art. And so it gives students a way to be creative, critical thinkers, problem solvers. And in the end, we saw those projects presented to sort of a Shark Tank type of environment where there were business owners and different people from different walks of life and careers coming and learning about the projects and awarding prizes in the end for these multi-year projects, and it was really interesting. So the projects that students do, they will get guidance. It's not like they have to think this thing up all by themselves. They'll get some guidance on some, some topics or some materials that they can use to work on their projects, but they develop this over a period of years. Also on Fridays is a Global Perspectives course. This is a curriculum from Cambridge International Education. It can be taught by anyone. It's a collaborative learning class that presents a series of challenges to students throughout the course of the year. The class promotes the skills of research, analysis, reflection, collaboration, and communication. And then finally, a wellness class that focuses on physical, mental, and emotional well-being in a supportive environment. And students will develop lifelong habits for maintaining balance, resilience, and self-care. So we're only starting with the sixth and the ninth grade, but as we scale up, we are planning advanced coursework. We are not limiting what could be offered for advanced coursework by showing you this, but we're showing you what we're definitely considering strongly. So these pathways are Engineering, Environmental Science, and Music, all grew out of that spring group work in their exploration on different pathways. So I'll just bring out that Engineering, we did see that at a school in Maine, and connected to the arts in Engineering, engineers are problem solvers, they're analysts, they're creators, inventors, they're makers. And if you think of some of the things that they create, if they come to it with an arts perspective, you have the difference between something that's useful and something that's useful and beautiful. So we feel like this has a great place in the school. Environmental Science came out of our partnership that we already have existing with North Shore Marine Science Center in Nahont. We had them working with us, and we felt like this would be a great pathway for students. So like other high schools, we would have AP offerings, and we also have written some grants for Project Lead the Way to introduce the Engineering curriculum. Those would be introduced early in the sixth grade and go through a series of courses, and it would result in three more electives in high school for students who choose the Engineering pathway. And then also Cambridge International Education, which I'll explain a little more deeply, but that is somewhat like AP College Board in dual enrollment in that the work that students do within a series of courses can earn them up to 30 credits, college credits. So these are some of the courses that we are strongly considering placing in this curriculum And then, as I explained, Project Lead the Way. This is a STEM curriculum, and they have several pathways, and the courses that we selected are in the Engineering pathway. These are the courses, and this is how they proceed from sixth grade on. Design and Modeling, App Creators, Automation Robotics, Introduction to Engineering and Design, Principles of Engineering, Civil Engineering and Architecture, and Aerospace Engineering. So the courses in middle school are just one trimester. So they'll get a dose of Engineering, get an experience with that, and build some skills and dispositions, and that will grow in high school. If they stick with the Engineering path, then they will have a year-long elective. This is just a little bit more about the two programs that we are looking at, Project Lead the Way Gateway and Project Lead the Way High School. So right now, this would be grant-funded. Like I said, we applied for grants. The deadline was this week, and they're in. And we can keep applying for grants for about four years, and then we can apply for designation to DESI for an innovative pathway. And then that could be the sustainable funding source for Project Lead the Way. And it features hands-on collaborative learning, students engaging in real-world challenges, fostering creativity, teamwork, and problem-solving. There's teacher training and support, and Project Lead the Way provides professional development to equip educators with STEM teaching strategies. College and career readiness is part of Project Lead the Way, preparing students for higher education and careers in those pathways we have selected Engineering. Cambridge International, this is a structured K-12 curriculum. We're starting in sixth grade, so we're, we're working with the middle school and high school curriculum, and it's a structured pathway, building on student skills. It fosters critical thinking, research, and collaboration. And it's a pathway that has pre-advanced work. The courses, the courses progress until students are in 11th and 12th grade, and then they can take advanced and O-level courses, which are the college credit-bearing courses. Cambridge International is recognized internationally. These are some of the courses within the Environmental Science pathways that we are And this just gives you a little more background on Cambridge Lower Secondary, where we would start. It starts with core subjects with additional options like Art, Digital Literacy, and Global Perspectives. Global Perspectives would be the course that we, we start with, and all students in CASA would be taking that course on Fridays. In the Upper Secondary, like AP, these courses come with exams. They offer 70 subjects, allowing for personalized study pathways, and emphasizes practical application, research skills, and global perspectives. As I said before, there are different, different levels, recognized worldwide for university admission. Courses emphasize independent learning, critical thinking, and subject mastery. Students can earn the Cambridge ACE Certificate, Advanced International Certificate of Education diploma by completing courses across different subject groups, up to 30 credits. Again, they offer professional development for teachers and schools, including online and face-to-face training for new and experienced teachers, covering subject-specific instruction, assessment, and pedagogy. They offer professional development qualification, PDQs, we call them PDPs, certifications that enhance teaching and leadership skills, workshops, webinars, and school support services. Like AP, districts can use their own textbooks, but Cambridge offers official textbooks. We would only be starting with one high school course that would require looking at Cambridge curriculum, and our Assistant Director of Science is looking at that right now. She's, she's receiving the information. And then last, I just want to share with you that multiple community partners were involved in the design and development of the CASA school model. Some of them include, like I said, Northeastern Marine Science Center, Company One, Lynn Music Foundation, Lynn Museum and Art Center, RAW Arts, North Shore Community College, Tufts University. I know I have forgotten some, but there were many, many people helping us with the development of the school. As the school develops, we'll look for ways to partner with these and other organizations to supplement curriculum programming at CASA.
Can I answer any questions for you? Member Dugan?
First of all, this is, thank you for the presentation. It's really exciting to me to just, since we've been talking about this for so long and to see it kind of come to fruition now tonight with the courses we'll be offering and everything, it's really exciting to me. So I'm really excited about that. The one thing swirling around my head is a little bit, this grade nine that's coming in, this will be our first group that needs to have a 2.0 in their core and then a pathway for their graduation requirements. So can you just kind of explain a little bit about, so you mentioned how electives will kind of help them get there. Obviously, I think their Humanities block will help them get there a little bit. So can you just explain a little bit more, I don't know, how maybe electives are going to help with that and like how they're, what that's going to look like for, for these
Deputy Goris is going to help me out with this question.
Oh, yeah.
So the requirements are 2.0 for their core content courses, and the core content courses must be aligned to the Massachusetts frameworks on math, English, and science, technology, engineering. So all those standards are expected in the Humanities courses and the STEM courses.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that it? Member Dugan?
If that was that, very exciting stuff.
Member Gaetley?
Thank you very much for this presentation. Thank you very much, Dr. Alvarez and Dr. Gardner, and all of the deputies for their input into this program that I have been hoping and praying for, for our students in Lynn for a very, very long time. I have personally taught Project Lead the Way. And to answer Member Dugan's question, I have had some, some students over at the other school I taught at, Project Lead the Way, Intro to Engineering Design, that couldn't sit still in their class, that were bored in the class, that couldn't do anything. But right now, I'm fine to say that that student that couldn't do that is now an architect working in the public, graduated from Wentworth University. This type of program, project-based learning, is so important to our students because not all students academically, what's the intelligence, linguistic or mathematical, they need to have something to make them learn. And a good example of that would be in the master schedule, if you took a look at robotics and coding. A lot of students are learning math, but they don't know why they're learning math. But then they go into this coding class, and they say, holy, holy moly. Fill in the blank. Holy moly, I needed math skills for this? Do you know?
Dr. Alvarez deserves credit for that course.
And that, that happens all the time in project-based learning, all the time. And I can attest to that because I've witnessed it many, many times. So I'm glad to see this is all thought out so well. My question is, how many have signed up? Sixth graders, ninth graders?
So we, we have exceeded the, the applications for the seats right now. So what, what we are, just talking with Deputy Goris about right now is, the snow day has set us back a little bit on our acceptances. And so all three application schools, however, are going to, are going to share out a date, and they're going to share out when students need to respond back by, because they could have applied to all three schools. So then we'll, once we find out, we'll just reshuffle.
And then we'll have a definite number.
Yes, yeah.
Well, kudos. This was well thought out. This was well planned, and I think our students will benefit. Thank you.
Member Casianos?
Dr. Gardner, thank you so much, and everyone that was involved in this. This is a long time coming. It's really exciting to see this project come to fruition, to see where we are, to actually, actually see the vision actually get implemented. I have a couple of questions around, I know you discussed the grant process a little bit between your presentation. So we are actively applying to grants, or applying at the moment. Have we secured any funding for any of these programs yet?
So, so for Project Lead the Way, we will have to wait. They're going to let us know in March about the funding, and that will, that will provide, like, the training, it will, for teachers, it will also provide us the durable equipment and supplies that we need to teach Engineering courses that we haven't taught before. So and the rest of the, the cost for the school is our normal cost for education that we are working on in the budget process. So the staffing, the textbooks, that will be in part of the normal budgeting process.
And DESI, you said after four years, then we can go to DESI and build out a sustainable financial, what was that last part when you, when you were saying about after four years of applying to grants?
There is a funding stream for innovation pathways that would allow us to get designation for an innovation pathway in Engineering that could be a funding stream for the continuing costs for Project Lead the Way.
And how do you become, how do we get competitive to get to that point? What do we have to do to do that?
So DESI has, DESI has a whole process for that, much like we've done for early college designations. You have to, you have to go through certain steps. You have to form a committee for the school that is going to advise on that pathway. You have to have, you know, a clear sequence of courses that students can take part in. Project Lead the Way is the most highly-funded innovation pathway in those types of courses. And so I think that we're, we're taking a good step by going with them because I think they're trusted courses. And the, the curriculum resources that come with Project Lead the Way courses are almost overabundant, which is, which is great because teachers will have that in their hands, and they can, they can choose, you know, they don't have to use every single part of the resource, but they have enough resources with that type of course that you're teaching a topic for the first time, you get training, you get an abundance of resources, and the results are going to be much better for students.
So have we done a budget breakdown, like a cost analysis? If we don't get the grants, then we're going to have to obviously come up with the money for the equipment. Have we looked at what those costs are going to look like? And I'm not familiar with what exactly those equipment costs are going to look like. And that kind of goes for my, also like the 2D art and design, some of, whatever equipment or when we put out a program like this, like we want to make sure that we have the tools that we can afford, right? So I don't know what cost breakdown have been done.
Yes, so we started this process last year in terms of putting the team together to create the item specifications for the science labs, which means like what equipment needs to be there, having all the price points for the different and specialized equipment. And so ISD is also working with us to make sure that the infrastructure in the building, right, supports the type of equipment. So we've been working in a number of ways, not only with the curriculum team to develop the price. So there are costs to the curriculum, the equipment, as well as the renovation and build-out of the spaces to ensure that we can actually deliver the type of instruction and the type of courses that Dr. Gardner shared. We, right currently, in the process of finalizing some of those budget items in terms of what we've added. So even the Cambridge International Education has cost associated with it, and so we will probably be able to, so we'll be able to provide all of those broken-down numbers when we give you the first budget, right, for this year. It'll all be included in there.
Member Reed?
Clarification question. So for the core classes, is it all going to be Cambridge International now? Are we still using some curriculum from Illustrated Math, et cetera, from other, like the other middle schools?
No, the, the Cambridge curriculum is just No, the, the Cambridge curriculum is just going to be a strand of the curriculum, and it's going to be, in middle school, it's just going to be an elective that happens once a week, but as students, as students progress in high school, there will be choices, it, it may not be like 100% of the students are probably not going to select an environmental pathway, it might be 25 of the students select the environmental pathway, and for that we may choose to use Cambridge resources, or we may choose to use our own and align it with Cambridge. It's like AP in the sense that you can, you can use some of your own curriculum, as long as you're aligning it to that final exam in the end.
So we will be using some of it still for?
Well, I will say that this is the first time that we're using Cambridge, but we do have a wheelhouse for using a framework, using a company like Cambridge in that we work with the College Board. And so what we do is we have our Assistant Curriculum Director who is right now reviewing the Cambridge resources to make sure that they are going to fulfill our needs, and vetting, and vetting that, and deciding if we will use the Cambridge resources or we'll use our own resources. For the math courses that you see, and we have asked our Assistant Curriculum Directors to buy the HQIM that they use right now, so illustrative math would be one of them. We don't want to stray away from high-quality curricular resources, but what, what the challenge of working on this school, a school that like we've never done before, is going to be weaving all this into an interdisciplinary way. And so that's, that's project work for our inter, for our, for our instructional departments to work on together, so that's curriculum, MLE, special ed, innovation, all working together, and I am pursuing grant opportunities to help us keep moving forward on working on that, because it will be, it will be work to create the student experience that we want, which is interdisciplinary and project-based.
Thank you.
Member Penya?
Thank you, thank you Dr. Gardner for the presentation, I enjoyed it, I want to thank Deputy Gores, all the stakeholders, everyone involved in putting this together, I am excited for our students, you know, just thinking about, it's a game changer for many families, and just, I'm thinking of a brighter picture too, like we're, we're utilizing our space that we have, you know, we're thinking outside the box, and that's exciting, you know. I just, just thinking of, you know, I have a middle schooler right now, and I'm, I'm trying, we're, we're going in there, we're going to try to sign up, you know, but it's amazing, and, and I'm just thinking, I'm excited for that, for our students, the opportunities that are there, like, you know, and, and just to think of, you know, robotics, coding, like, these are things that are competitive, things, things that are happening now, and I'm excited for our students, and let's go.
Thank you, me too.
Let's go, you know, thank you.
Member Sadaway?
Thank you, thank you for your presentation again, it was great, I'm excited about all these program studies as well, I just had a couple of questions that I had as well. This is related to like recruitment, I'm wondering if, like what the plan is for attracting qualified educators specialized in the STEAM subjects to this CASA program, I know that we see challenges like trying to recruit for LVTI, for our trades there, and so what kind of makes this different?
We are going to post, post these positions like we will with all positions for all schools and looking for qualified candidates. This is something we again have shared with Sheila O'Neil, some job descriptions that can communicate to teachers what kind of school this is, and why it's different, and that's something that we have to work on with LTU to review those, and to review those potential postings and edit them so that they, that they work. But that, that would be the way that we communicate it, and, you know, I have been, I have been encouraged already by just, you know, some questions that we've had from teachers in the district who are curious about the school, and I think that, that teachers who are attracted by this type of learning will want to come to this type of school.
And then in regards to the professional development, because there are specific programs, are there going to be specific training programs to prepare these teachers? Are they interdisciplinary approached, and considering these specialties, are they going to cost the district more?
So we already do have a contract with the Centers for Artistry and Scholarship, and they are going to provide some training for teachers in the school, the teachers who are ultimately hired in the school, to, we took some training, we took a lot of training with, with Centers for Artistry and Scholarship, and they really help you with the mindset of how you work together with other subject areas to find those linkages, those interdisciplinary links. So we have that, but in addition to that, with Project Lead the Way, we are going to have specific training that teachers who are hired, they'll be hired with the understanding that we need to give you Project Lead the Way training.
And then just lastly, I was just curious on the staffing ratios, like for the support for the students?
So in the first, in the first year, we have already, we have already mapped out a staffing plan, we have mapped out a room utilization with the staff, we have looked at how much staff it would take to have like that early, late shift, we may have a little, we may, we, I don't want to say we have an overly generous staffing amount, but I think that we're looking to make sure that we have enough staff so that in the first year, they have enough staff to really infuse that building with the STEAM and work with each other to build up that STEAM curriculum. So I, I mean, I think that we can get into more details as we go through the budget process as to how many teachers are going to be at the school, and we're, we're thinking like we would for any other school about the MLE and special ed staff that we may need, and that will be depending upon the students that come to the building.
Thank you. I just wanted to add my gratitude for the teamwork on this, Dr. Alvarez, Dr. Gardner, and all the, the many partners, many faculty and staff that have, that participated in the design sessions that has now taken, you know, a couple of years, almost. It is, I think if we all take a step back here, this is a remarkable journey that the Lynn Public Schools is on, and there's a lot left to do, right, and a lot of questions that we still have, but the fact that we're here with a space, with a plan, with a curriculum, with the confidence of our families, you know, for, for it to be oversubscribed, is a, is a really exciting moment, and I, and I think just a great example of the district's ability to innovate and offer choice to our students, and, and our, our faculty's ability to, to work with us to do that, and to help us figure that out, and, and shows, I think, the spirit this district has, to, to, to be able to adapt and change in a really challenging educational environment. And, you know, it can't happen with that kind of collaboration, everybody in the LPS, our partners here, the, the faculty and the teachers' union, as well as the support we've gotten from the council to, to, you know, make some of these investments, we just got a, I mean, we just got another transfer through to, to be building the budget for some of the building investments that are needed, and then obviously the, the support in the school committee. And when we, we're looking at the budget, we, we can't do these kinds of innovations without having the, the, the budget that we do, and so I think, you know, as, as we move forward, we, we should keep that in mind, this, this progress and this innovation is, requires a lot of investment, and, and, you know, we need to be able to protect that, so, thank you for everybody, what you're doing.
Thank you.
Member Gaetley?
I'd like to make a motion to accept this program of studies for CASA.
Second.
And move it to the full committee, I was going to say that right afterwards.
Member Sadaway?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Member Sadaway?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Alright, we will move into the open mic session of the meeting, the open mic session is designed to provide an opportunity for citizens to express their views on matters of concern to the school committee, the sessions are not designed to encourage debate or lengthy exchange of views, but are to have the committee understand numerous points of view. The committee would appreciate speakers keeping their presentation to three minutes in order to accommodate as many people as time permits, the chair deserves the right to limit the number of speakers on the same topic to three. All speakers must be at least 18 years of age or enrolled in high school in the Lynn Public Schools District, and have me discuss their views with a student government representative. The chair deserves the right to rule the speaker out of order if they feel that the speaker's comments are personal in nature, if his speaker's comments are directed at a school committee member or a member of school administration in attendance, that member through the chair may address the individual. Do you have some folks signed up here, the first one is Azaritem Fortago, and you can correct my attempt at your handwriting when you begin, but if you live at 149 President Street, you're up.
Hi, I'm Asandam Fortchapp, and I live at 149 President Street. I'm a senior at Lynn English High School, and I am here again with the Neighbor to Neighbor Youth Committee, and I just want to start off by sharing why our group is here again today, and we're here to show just how important extracurriculars issue is, and why we are advocating, and why we are advocating for us and our peers and our beliefs, wait, sorry, and why we believe that consistency and persistence in showing up is important for communicating fully. Second, those of us who are here a second time are also here to support our co-organizers in sharing their personal experiences to add to the testimony we provided last time. And third, we have heard that some positive conversations have already been happening around some of the issues we raised, and we are grateful and excited to hear that our statements and our issues are being taken seriously. However, we would like to be an active part of these conversations and to work in collaboration with Lynn Public Schools, the school committee, and the student cabinet to pursue the proposals we have put forward in ways that bring knowledge together with ours and ensures the most effective outcomes possible. We're here to express that we are serious about the desire to be a part of this process and to work alongside you, and to show you that we, that we have valuable perspectives and offerings in doing so. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Next we have Mohammed Jahann.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Mohammed Jahann, and I live at 12 Bruce Place in Lynn, Massachusetts, I'm a current junior attending Lynn English High School, I'm here today with Neighbor to Neighbor as a youth member, and will be speaking on behalf of Section 4 of our proposal, the Club Advisor Stipend section. We know the specific proposal, unlike others, will need to be addressed through the Lynn Teachers Union contract negotiations, but I wanted to speak on my personal experience with this, with this issue today, as I, as the, as I know, the committee is also a part of that process. Within this section, we've outlined the pre-existing problem that has been prevalent within our schools for a very long time. I myself am a student who has put in a tremendous amount of effort towards starting up a club that is representative of my identity as a South Asian American student attending Lynn English High School. Lynn English High School is also a school made up of several different minority, minority groups, one of them being the Bengali, Indian, and other South Asian groups, and being a student coming from the Bengali community and not seeing much representation, I decided to join the Asian American Club at my school while also trying to create another after-school program known as South Asian American Students Association. When involved in proposing my idea to my vice principal and advisor, I was met with open arms from my vice principal with the idea of establishing the club within the school. However, just after a year of trial and error with my former advisor, they wanted out, unless it had become an official club, and in order to officially establish an extracurricular or an after-school program, it must have a budget stipend attached for the advisor. With this unfortunate news, I decided to look into, into what it takes to gain that stipend for my advisor and many others for other after-school programs that deserve just as much as mine had. Within my research, I realized that there were no clear available allowance set for newly created programs and the pathway for students to seek such allowance, which were unclear and had placed an unfair burden on students trying to figure them out. And not only has creating after-school programs that myself and other students feel as a part of their identity have been hard, but so has being able to feel recognized as a student and having the opportunity to be able to participate in what we love without having our advisors go under scen. Changing this is one of our main goals as the Neighbor to Neighbor Youth Team, and we believe our proposals will help to do that. Thank you.
Next is John Givaud. Giovanni.
Good evening, everyone, my name is John Giovanni, I live in Lynn, am a senior attending Lynn English High School, and I'm here today as part of the Neighbor to Neighbor Youth Team to further address this problem of limited, disorganized extracurricular funds, in particular materials, through sharing my own experiences. One of the clubs I am part of is the Lynn, is the school's math team, there we come together, our tight-knit body to practice some problems similar to the ones we expect to see in the competition that is upcoming. While this isn't inherent, wait. Yes. While this isn't inherently negative, we are usually blown out of the water by other schools. I cannot for certain identify the cause, though I know our opposition has a stronger grasp of the material. I therefore found myself yearning for solutions, one in particular being textbooks, such as The Art of Problem Solving series, that relate to the concepts we anticipate to play with. These books are especially useful since some of their purpose is to prepare students for, say, the American Invitational Mathematics Examination, a nationwide competition. However, these aren't resources everyone may be willing to purchase, either out of fear that they will not use it fully or because of their price, which is a hefty $50 per. And this is what I believe is missing, not just from the math team, but many other of my, of my and my peers' experiences, we lack the materials to try. I have never given up on the math team, but I understand that not everyone has the same drive to show up and play because of this. If we are able to identify and learn together exactly what we are to understand, instead of mindlessly regurgitating numbers onto the paper to score only the first question of our set, we are able to have the chance to win honestly and efficiently. Essentially, our triumph would feel more like a triumph, our losses less bitter, knowing we had a chance instead of guaranteed failure. But it all starts in the correct allocation of funds. I am also a recent part of the Lynn High School All-City Band. The school district is one of the largest in Massachusetts, Lynn having a population of over 100,000. When I attended the Salem Invitational, a memory I will forever cherish, it was disheartening to see that we were one of the smallest bands there. It was disheartening having to march the field with a tattered shoe whose sole held on for dear life. It was puzzling seeing the other bands with a color guard and wondering, could we make one work for our own school? I can infer that our small band is once more because of the challenges with encouragement rooted in underfunding. We do not have the ability to provide students with an array of different instruments so that they may discover a love for being a flutist, or a saxophonist, or a trumpeter, everything in between. I recall in elementary school seeing my classmates with their clar- I recall in elementary school seeing my classmates with their clarinets or so during music class, and if memory serves, I wanted to play something. Unfortunately, as an underprivileged student, because I was raised by a single working mother, I remember not having this luxury and therefore lost my motivation, so I gave up quickly on this idea. But it doesn't have to be this way. We can give students in high school the opportunity to determine interests they could never fully exercise, opportunities that could change their lives going into adulthood. It is important to understand that each generation builds the next, but we cannot do that when we have no incentive, no money, and a faltering education that, although I understand tries its best, is lacking compared to our very own neighbors. Equal, equal opportunity is one of the core aspects of our country, so we must do our part to fight to make it a reality. Thank you for listening.
Good job. Thank you. Thank you so much. Next is Valeria Mendez.
Good evening. My name is Valeria Mendez. I live at 52 Grace Avenue in Lynn. As a four-year member of the Lynn All-City High School Orchestra and Lynn English Cheerleading Team, I've seen firsthand the issue with our district's busing situation and the lack of support for programs and its consequences. Every year, we delay the start of our orchestra rehearsals, waiting for the bus to arrive, which brings our musicians from the other schools. Students are discouraged from attending rehearsal and eventually leave the program for they feel that they are wasting valuable time awaiting for the unreliable transportation. Also, we do not have enough instruments to loan to our students, leaving them to buy one or rent it with their own money, creating a barrier for many to join the orchestra. Over the years, I've seen the number of members decrease, from over fifty in my freshman year to about thirty this year across all public high schools. Additionally, my cheering team have been left outside our school, waiting for a bus to take us to our competition, which never arrived, leaving us to scramble, looking for our own transportation to a competition forty-five minutes away. Also, we invest hundreds of dollars every year to pay for our competition fees, choreography, and utilize the money that we fundraise by standing outside in the cold or under the hot sun, canning for many hours. Furthermore, every year, we do not get a bus to attend away games to our football and basketball games. Our players are left without anyone to cheer for them, especially when games are far from the city, leaving them to feel discouraged and our cheerleaders to feel frustrated. How are we supposed to fulfill our role of uplifting our fellow athletes and showcasing school pride if we are not provided the necessities to do so? Having experienced in this space, sitting alongside you at these school committee meetings as a student representative, I've witnessed the need for youth engagement. As a community, we should not just look towards bettering the future with our academics, back now for the present, supporting our school's extracurricular programs. Research by the National Center for Education Statistics found that students involved in such activities exhibit higher attendance rates, better academic performance, and increased aspiration for continuing education beyond high school. As referred with our experience, our experiences, it is time to tackle this issue that has been prominent for so many years. It is essential to provide our students with the support they need to support their passions and gain experience doing what they love. For that, I ask that you continue to work with us as we further this campaign. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Is there anyone else for open mic? Anyone else wishing to speak at open mic? Last call for open mic, and we will close the open mic portion of the evening and move into the third regular school committee meeting. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Gaetley?
Present.
Member Pena?
Present.
Member Reed?
Present.
Member Sadaway?
Present.
Mayor Nicholson?
Present. And then we also have Kyla Chajon.
Chahon.
Chahon. Who is returning as our student representative and from a scheduling change, so she could attend the ceremony for the Posse Foundation. Which identifies, recruits and trains individuals with extraordinary leadership potential. Posse scholars receive full tuition leadership scholarships from Posse's partner colleges and universities. In 2010, the Posse Foundation was honored by President Barack Obama with a portion of his Nobel Prize Award. This highly competitive scholarship is awarded to students after a process that includes multiple rounds of interviews. Kyla was selected by Bucknell University. To receive the scholarship along with nine other students from the Boston area, this speaks to her hard work, dedication, and demonstrated leadership abilities. Welcome, Kyla. Excellent. Alright, if you are able, please rise for, salute to the flag and remain standing for a moment of silence.
My allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence in memory of Antoinette Casella Luchade, passed away February 7th, 2025. Thank you. Next, the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to
Second.
Wake up.
Sorry.
Accept the Curriculum Subcommittee Meeting on January 30th, 2025. Policy Subcommittee Meeting on January 30th, 2025, and the Secondary Regular Meeting on January 30th, 2025.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Post. Guys have it? Presentations.
Thank you. This evening, we have the District Guidance Department, Ms. Donna Doucette, who took over this position in November of this past year. And just a correction for the record on the agenda, her title is District Guidance Counselor. And Dr. Shannon Gardner, our Executive Director for Innovation and Grants Management, will also share in the presentation.
Again, Shannon Gardner, Executive Director of Innovation. And I'd like to introduce Donna Doucette, our District Guidance Counselor. I just want to take a moment to say that I have praised Donna before to this committee many times for her work with the Celtics Partnership. I'm so proud of her work and so grateful for all her contributions to LPS as a guidance counselor, and as someone who did an incredible amount of recruiting for early college promise, early college. She's been so supportive of programming and the Celtics Partnership. And then I will turn it over to Donna.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Gardner. Is this, I don't want to be a cliche, but is this thing on?
No.
Just to give you a little bit of background on me, again, my name is Donna Doucette. I am a, gosh, God only knows what generation Linner I am. But I can tell you that I am a third-generation attendee of Lynn Classical High School. I have to say attendee instead of graduate because in 1937, my grandmother walked into her typing class and ran away very nervously to the GE to get a job, not as a typist. So, that is a little bit of family lore for you, but my mother and I both graduated from classical high school. I am honored to take this job. I have a great deal of passion and love for this city, working with kids. I've worked in the Lynn Public Schools since 1998. So, there are, I'm now working with the children of the students I first had, which is always so exciting. But I am very excited for this new opportunity to work with the guidance offices citywide. I think that this is something that, you know, is very, very useful. And as you can, as I present this to you, you're going to see some of the reasons why I think this is valuable and some of the work that I have done and that I will still continue to do. So, as doc, as requested by Dr. Alvarez, I will be discussing the landscape of our school counseling processes. This recent assessment aims to provide a comprehensive overview of our current school counseling practices, identify areas for improvement, and guide future planning. We sought to identify opportunities for enhancement to help ensure that our services are effectively meeting the needs of our diverse student population. To gather valuable insights, we conducted a series of meetings with our middle and high school guidance counseling teams. These meetings provided a platform for counselors to share their experiences, challenges, and successes. Key topics included: Current counseling practices, discussing an overview of the methods and strategies currently in use; Student needs, identifying the most pressing needs of our student population; Resource allocation, evaluating the availability and utilization of resources; And collaboration, assessing the level of partnership between counselors, teachers, and administrators. Guidance Department counseling services are essential in helping students navigate the complex landscape of post-secondary options. These services provide personalized support, helping students identify their strengths, interests, and goals. By offering one-on-one counseling, workshops, and resources such as the MyCap curriculum, we empower students to make informed decisions about their future. To meet the diverse needs of our students, our guidance departments focus on several critical elements, including: Individual counseling, providing personalized meetings to discuss academic goals, career aspirations, and personal challenges; Career exploration, providing tools and resources to help students explore various career paths and understand the education and skills required for these; College planning, providing assistance with college applications, financial aid, scholarships, and standardized tests; Academic support, assisting students with annual course selection, emphasizing strong study habits, time man, and time management to ensure academic success; And social and emotional support, providing a safe space for students to discuss personal issues and develop coping strategies in partnership with our school social work teams. To deliver the best possible services, we are working to align our processes to be effective and efficient, with a special focus on streamlined communication using digital tools. Lynn Public Schools' introduction of the District Guidance Counselor role aims to enhance the overall quality and effectiveness of school counseling services throughout our great city. This new role focuses on several key areas. As District Guidance Counselor, I will support the delivery of comprehensive counseling services across all schools in the district. I will collaborate with guidance teams to establish clear priorities addressing the most pressing needs of students, including academic support, career planning, and personal development. I will work to implement efficient and effective methods for delivering counseling services, utilizing both in-person and digital platforms to maximize accessibility. I will work to enhance communication channels with students and their families to ensure they are well-informed and feel supported throughout their educational journey. Through collaboration with Marissa Angeli, our Early College Pathways Project Manager, guidance teams will continue to develop the MyCap curriculum and integrate students' personal reflections on their college and career aspirations into the counseling program to provide structured and comprehensive career and academic planning. We will deliver ongoing support, training, and professional development opportunities for school counselors to ensure that they are equipped with the latest knowledge and skills to meet the needs of the diverse population of students. Positive trends: The established middle school cluster model fosters strong relationships between guidance counselors and other school staff, facilitating smoother transitions for students from elementary to middle school. Guidance departments take great pride in their relationships with community organizations such as Mass Hire, Raw Arts, Girls Incorporated, Upward Bound, La Vida Scholars, Trio, and the Lynn Hispanic Society, to name a few. These collaborations enhance the support and resources available to our students. Our guidance departments offer a wide range of services to meet the needs of our students, including individual, small group, and large group sessions at both middle and high school levels, tailored to meet the diverse needs of our population. Guidance departments organize on-the-spot admissions events with local colleges, such as North Shore Community College and Stalem State University, allowing students to streamline their application processes and receive immediate decisions from college admissions administrators. Our counselors arrange field trips to colleges and college fairs to expose students to various higher education opportunities and help make them aware, and make them, excuse me, to facilitate more informed decisions about their post-secondary education. Our high schools provide summer programs featuring campus tours, college application support, financial aid awareness, giving students the opportunity to see college environments and plan for their future academic endeavors. Areas of needs: In 2025, our guidance departments are presented with both challenges and opportunities. The decline in attendance post-COVID has shifted focus away from essential guidance services, impacting their effectiveness and reach. There is a noticeable lack of clarity regarding the various tasks assigned to the guidance department, leading to potential inefficiencies and overlaps in responsibility. There is a need for in-depth professional development on platforms that are used daily, ensuring staff are well-equipped to unify these tools, to utilize these tools effectively. Our plan to enhance professional collaboration opportunities will work to foster a more cohesive and supportive working environment, benefiting both staff and students. Improved coordination of scheduling procedures will help to streamline operations and smooth student grade-level transitions. Streamlining dissemination and access to scholarship information can significantly aid students in securing financial support for their education. As District Guidance Counselor, I will work to facilitate coordination across schools to ensure a unified approach to guidance services, promoting consistency and effectiveness throughout the city. I will work to enhance communication channels and facilitate programs more efficiently to promote awareness and engagement. I will serve as a communication conduit between district administrators and the individual guidance departments to foster information flow and alignment of goals. I will work to augment collaborative efforts and organize ongoing professional development opportunities for middle and high school guidance teams to ensure they are equipped with the latest skills and knowledge to support their students effectively. In conclusion, this landscape assessment has provided us with valuable insights into our school counseling processes. By addressing the identified areas for improvement and implemented the recommended changes, we can enhance the effectiveness of our counseling services and better support our students. Thank you for your time and attention, and I look forward to working with you in a collaborative relationship as we go forward.
Thank you. Member Sadaway?
Member Castellanos?
Thank you for your presentation. A couple of questions. One of the biggest concerns that I hear from constituents is adding additional administration roles. Does this role currently fall within the deputy purview, or is it within each school's principal?
This role reports to me. Yep.
Are there any budgetary concerns associated with this change?
This is currently a grant-funded position, and I will let Dr. Alvarez address the rest.
Right, so currently, we're funding the position from titles. There aren't any concerns about the continuation of that.
And then just lastly, what are the key performance indicators that would be tracked to measure success?
So, I evaluate Donna, and we are setting goals in her evaluation that are going to link to many of the things that she just shared with you about her, her working plan going forward.
Thank you.
Member Castellanos?
Welcome. Thank you. I like the, is it third-generation Linner?
Third, well, no. I'm a tenth-generation Linner. Third-generation classical attendee.
I'm working on, my meal is kind of like second generation now. I'm trying to build my Linnerhood. I appreciate it. Appreciate it, Doug. No, it was a good way to lead into it. I, Lynn has the best guidance department, some of the best counselors that you ever will meet. I've had life-changing moments in Lynn English High School, guidance department folks that work there. Had a high school guidance counselor literally changed my life. I wouldn't be here. They were the ones that helped me engage with staff, to help me navigate really complex traumas in my life as a kid. A lot of things, tragedies, and hardships that I went through. But the guidance department, before this was all, before you, this position and all this framework, it's interesting to hear it all framed out because a lot of the staff, they possess this. It's there right now. And to, 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 to see what we're doing to build out a landscape assessment, to see how we could to see how we could improve the process, and to increase collaboration and obviously impact our twenty-first century workforce, right? We're trying to get kids into a pathway, get these folks, our students, prepared. What conversations have you had with the counselors and departments now? What have, what does that look like for you moving forward? What's it been like? How's it been? Are you seeing barriers to the connections that you're seeing, or?
Honestly, I've worked in Lynn Public Schools since nineteen ninety-eight, so I have previous relationships with most of the departments in the city, at least one person on every team almost. Honestly, the reception I got was very welcoming and very forthcoming. I think that, I can speak for myself, and I think I can speak for many other guidance counselors, is that we are all our own islands. In a traditional district, there would be a guidance director that would be doing the things that I'm taking over in this position right now. But our departments, you know, I'm working with seven-plus guidance teams right now to try and streamline things so that we're making the most effective use of our time and our resources and to make sure that students in West Lynn and students in East Lynn have the same opportunities. And I love that you had such a great relationship with your guidance counselor. I think that that is very, very valuable. I personally had one as well, and that's what brought me into this. I wanted to come back and do the same for what had, some people would help me.
That's wonderful. And I do have just one more follow-up on the areas of needs. Like, are we, so time with the guidance counselor, that's always been a category, like how much time we get to spend about career readiness, life skill, just basic, you know, getting ready for, you know, how many kids, I'm fresh generation, so I didn't really have the conversation, like I told you, till I was like almost at the end. So, like, are these areas that we're going to be hopefully to, like, to amplify? Or are we trying to improve what that relationship's going to look like? Because I saw the collaborations with some of our programs that we work with, I know, RAR, Girls Inc., Upward Bound, there's so many more too. We have a lot of community-based stakeholders in the city of Lynn. So, what are we doing to, I guess, improve that area?
So, we're doing a lot of exciting things, actually. So, one of the things, one of the questions that I posed to people across the city is, what do you do outside the parameters of a traditional guidance job? What additional hats are you wearing that take away from your time, your face time with your students? And I got some really good answers on that. And those are issues that we will be addressing and moving forward on and assessing, is this really the best use of the guidance counselor's time? In terms of the, what you're talking about, in a, sitting down with a student and addressing what they're interested in, we are instituting a brand-new curriculum called MICAP that begins in sixth grade and builds through grade twelve. And it really is amazing. And it's going to provide students and the people who work with them a vast array of information on what the kid, what a student is interested in, what a student excels in, how their ideas may change over time, because again, we'll have this data going back to when they were twelve. So, let's say I'm sitting down with the senior right now, and that senior doesn't know what they want to do. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. Right? Because again, who knows? It's tough. It's a tough question at seventeen, eighteen years old, right? It's a tough question at forty sometimes, right? But I can go back, and even if it just sparks a conversation, I can say, you know, when you were thirteen, you had an interest in working with animals. Have you thought about that since then? And that might bring in something in that student. And that's what is so key about all of this, is that these processes that we're bringing in, we want to have more face time with students, we're thinking about new and innovative ideas of arranging things to allow the counselors to have more access to the students and to build that stronger relationship. Because like you said, you opened up to that guidance counselor. If you didn't have that trust there, you wouldn't have done that. So, that's what we want to foster. We want to foster a relationship that builds and so that when they get to that point where they're making that first really big decision of what they're going to try first after high school, they feel supported and listened to, as well as, you know, helped along the way. Thank you.
Member Reed.
I like my guidance counselor too.
I don't know. I wasn't going to mention any names, Sean.
I hope you're still there while my son's there, so.
Oh, thank you, Sean. You're very sweet.
But no, I'm seriously excited you're in this role. My guidance counselor fired me and he took me on, so, true story. Something I hear about, something I hear about sort of, anecdotally, I don't know if there's much truth to this, but from talking with friends who both went to schools and constituents with kids in the schools now, there's a sense that like, I think all our guidance counselors are great, but that are sort of overburdened, but that when it comes to like college options, I think we do a really great job with the local schools. And I also think we really do a good job with sort of top-tier schools. I think where there's sort of a gap there is mid-tier schools throughout the rest of the country. Sort of like people not knowing about sort of some of the Big Ten schools or some of the schools across country. And I don't know if there's anything that can be done about that, but it just seems relative to other districts, we're sending kids there at a much lower rate. Yeah, and including NSCAC schools, everything like that. So, just wanted to know if you had any thoughts on that.
I think that part of this role is to listen, to expand horizons, right? Because we only know what we know. And part of what I would love to do with this is, those schools that you're talking about often send representatives around the country to go and visit. So, what I would like to do is get a list of who's in the area and when, and make those admissions counselors available to the kids in the schools and send out a monthly newsletter letting those students know what colleges will be visiting their campus, allowing them an opportunity to sign up, saying that they want to meet with that college admissions person. And then the great thing about that is having a list of people who are interested in schools, perhaps they're absent that day. We'll still have their, the college will still have their name and the ability to reach out and connect with those students.
Super helpful. Appreciate it. All right. Thank you so much for the presentation, and good luck, and thanks to the whole guidance team for all, everything too, and we're very excited for it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is a field trip request for Marshall Middle, grade eight, to go to Kennebec Lake Park in Salem, New Hampshire on June ninth. It's a recommendation, Superintendent.
The recommendation is for approval for Marshall Middle, grade eight, to Kennebec Lake Park in Salem, New Hampshire on June ninth, two thousand twenty-five.
Make a motion to accept Superintendent's recommendation to move forward with the field trip.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
opposed? Guys have it. Were there any votes taken in the curriculum subcommittee meeting?
Yes.
And what were those votes? To approve the curriculum for?
Program of studies.
Program of studies for, do you want to read the motion, please?
A motion to approve the program of studies for CASA and move to the full committee.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Thank you. Any communications? None?
Motion adjourned.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?